I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everybody to the Laverne Planning Commission May 28, 2019 at 6:00 PM meeting. We do have a quorum. Our first item of business is to approve the meeting minutes of April 30, 2019, regular meeting.
Do you want to make a motion to accept or submitted?
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. First item of business under old business has been deferred. Moving on to the second item. Site plan for Tennessee Farmers Cooperative requested by Huddleston Steel. Property located at 200 Old Waldron Road, Tax Map 15, Parcel 24, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Tennessee Farmers Cooperative, Inc. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is site plan approval for an addition to the existing co-op facility, and they're requesting to add 11,300 square feet. And there's been a few technical items over the last two months, and one of those was the fire sprinkler ordinance, so they went to the Construction Board of Appeals on May 14th, and they were able, the board voted to relax the sprinkler requirement. So the addition originally was closer to 13,000 square feet back in February and March, and now it's down to 11,300. And it is a really large parcel. It's about 119 acres, and the whole parcel is zoned I-2, but only a small part is in the overlay district, and that would be this far western section nearest to Waldron Road. So none of this site is in the overlay district. And some photos of the site. And the addition go right in this area roughly. You can see another photo there. And on the plan that is submitted, there's a full-size copy that I gave Mr. Coates, and they added some landscaping, some three-foot-tall shrubbery around the parking areas to meet our landscape ordinance. They did that since the workshop two weeks ago, and I believe that was the only change.
The ADA parking and all that was covered as well?
Yes, sir. The parking was covered, and that's on there as well. On the plan, there's a detail of the sign for the ADA parking. Those were really the only issues outstanding.
So we had eight items at the workshop. Did they all get addressed?
Yes, sir, they have.
That's why I was...
They've been addressed. Most of those were, I think, three or four of the eight were handicap and ADA parking.
Very good. Do we have any questions or comments for staff or for the applicant? Not, we'll entertain a motion.
Do you want to make a motion to accept or submitted?
We have a motion to accept or submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. On to our next item. Item number three under old business. Site plan, Spirit of Life Ministries requested by Asme Tech Engineering. Property located at 253 Stones River Road, Tax Map 15L, Group B, Parcel 24, R1 Low Density Residential Zoning District. Property owned by Ministerios Espiritual de Vida. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is site plan approval for a new church in Laverne located on Stones River Road, and the property is currently zoned R1. And they went to the Board of Zoning Appeals a year ago in May of 18 and received permission to establish a church in this R1 district. And they are proposing to build a new building that would be 24,380 square feet. And there is an existing home here on the property, and that will stay, and that may become a residence for someone in the church. And they are proposing a large parking area with 227 parking spaces, and there's 191 required, so they have plenty of parking. And none of this site is in any overlay district. And there were just a few minor comments from the workshop. One was to add some landscaping, and that has been done on the landscape sheet in your packet. And I believe the sidewalk question from last month has also been taken care of. That would be in this area, Stones River Road. There is an existing sidewalk today on all of this, on Stones River, and there's not here on Mason, but they are proposing to build a sidewalk on Mason. And you can see the dumpster enclosure. I know we talked about that maybe month, last month, so that's still here in this area at the northwest corner of the site. And that pretty much covers everything. So staff, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we have any questions for staff or for the applicant?
Looks like they added in the islands as well on Stones River Road, as well as, it looks like they've increased some of that buffering with the residential homes surrounding it.
It's laying very heavily. Is that correct, Mr.?
Yep. Just one question for staff. Just looking at the sidewalk coming down Stones River Road, is it just the way it's drawn out? But it seems to be wider on the existing one, and as it swings around onto their property, it gets narrower. Is that just my eyesight?
I think it's probably partially a trick of it, but really, the original sidewalk was built as a safe routes to school program, so they have different requirements. I believe it's a six-foot wide, whereas this is a residential district which would require a five-foot wide. So they would comply at either width, but...
It just looks like it's listed as six on the drawings.
Yeah, if, as mentioned, if it's listed, that's typically what governs, so it should be six foot.
Very good.
Can you just ask the engineer who's here?
Would you mind stepping to the podium and stating your name and address for the record, sir?
Rocky de Blom, 711 Hickerson Drive, White House, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coates?
Is the sidewalk along Stones River Road, is that being consistent with a six feet, or is it going to narrow down?
Normally five, but it's already six, so I just kept it at that.
Kept it at six.
So it would match?
Okay. It just, it looks it narrows down, and I just want to make sure that we all agree that it's six feet.
I'll say it's six.
Six feet. Perfect.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Unless anybody else has any questions, I'm going to motion to accept as submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four under old business has been deferred. Moving on to item number five, which is the first item under new business. Final plat, horizontal property regime, Lot 8, Southway Industrial Park, Nestrick Properties. Property owned by Warren &amp; Associates. Property located on Bain Drive, Tax Map 17, Parcel 7.16, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Nestrick Properties Holding LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. This is the horizontal property regime for Lot 8 of the Southway Industrial Park, and this site plan was approved last month in April at the Planning Commission. And as part of their final approvals, they needed to submit this HPR. Currently, this property is vacant, and there's some site photos. It was heavily treed until about sometime in the last year, so that's why the ortho is showing that. They're probably two years old. But it has been cleared, and there's site photos from a couple of weeks ago. And they do propose to build, I think it's total of six warehouses of varying sizes, and the applicant will be providing a total of 30 parking spaces, and 18 are required, so they have adequate parking. And the entire site is 4.51 acres, and it's all zoned I-2. And we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments for the staff or the applicant on this item?
So just for, the change on number two, we had changed proposed water and sewer to existing construction companies. Does that get squared away?
Um, let me make sure I look at the right thing here. Is that from your workshop notes, Mr.?
Yeah, sorry, I'm at my one. Let's go include restricted covenants. Have we got those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The chairman will make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Our second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. On to item number six. Final plat, horizontal property regime, 157 Jones Boulevard requested by Dale &amp; Associates. Property located on Jones Boulevard, Tax Map 17, Parcel 7.12, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Nestrick Properties Holding LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is also a horizontal property regime, and this site was approved, site plan was approved probably six months to a year ago, and they have constructed six new warehouses on this site, and they're all, I think five of them have a CO. Not sure about the six of them. And those buildings range from about 9,600 square feet up to 12. And this is a little bit over three acres in size, and it's also zoned I-2. And I've got some photos. Here's, you all probably are familiar with these now. We've seen them for several months. And that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the board?
Yes. Was the addressing corrected? I can see on here we've got 157. We have 155.
155 is the actual address, and that has been corrected on the plans that submitted, but for consistency's sake, we have to keep it the same throughout our agendas.
Just want to make sure that was cleared up, as I know that was a discussion item here.
Yes, sir. So in meeting, we're addressing it as 157. Physically, it's 155, correct?
Yes, and on your site plans, it will be noted as 155 because that is its actual physical address.
Should we include the correct address in the motion?
I don't think it's necessary. It would just, I would make the motion to, based on what you got on the agenda, because that's what you saw at the workshop is, so...
Great. Thank you. Well, if we don't have any other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the, that as submitted.
Motion to accept is submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Moving on to item number seven. Final plat, horizontal property regime, 165 Jones Boulevard requested by Dale &amp; Associates. Property located on Jones Boulevard, Tax Map 17, Parcel 7.14, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Ms. Patrick Properties Holding LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. And this is the third HPR on the agenda tonight, and also same street, Jones Boulevard, 165. And so this is at the end of the street on the north side, and it's zoned I-2 as well. And they are, this site is 2.31 acres, and they'll also be building warehouses on this property, small to medium-sized warehouses. And so this HPR defines the common elements for the site, and that's, no technical comments, so that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? No questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept or submitted.
We have a motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
Our second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next item, item number eight. Site plan revision Scott Equipment requested by Fulmer Engineering. Property located on Waldron Road, Tax Map 15, Parcel 170.03, I-2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. Property owned by Scott Equipment Company LLC. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. You may remember this applicant did not attend the workshop two weeks ago, and the next day, I talked on the phone with the engineer for this project, and he said they had the wrong date for the workshop. He had the wrong date written down, and so he's pretty familiar with Laverne because he's built here and developed here before. So he said, we had a conversation. I told him there was a lot of comments and discussion, and we sure wish he had been here. And I said, but according to our rules, I said, they can't move you forward tonight. But I did tell him that it would be a good idea if he were here tonight to hear what you all had to say, and so that he could be on some kind of schedule for June. So I really thought he was going to be here, but I don't know that they're here. Might ask, but I don't see anybody.
Anybody here from Scott Equipment? I assume not. I don't see a familiar face on that project. Did he request a deferral verbally or in writing, sir?
No, not, he didn't request one, but...
Would staff request a deferral form?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And we'll defer this item because this is a pretty extensive project. So we will defer item number eight and move on to item number nine.
And that would be the building that was sideways?
Yes, sir. Walden Road. Yes, sir. That's correct. Item number nine, site plan, LaPorte Building requested by Dale &amp; Associates. Property located at 5242 Murfreesboro Road, Tax Map 15, Parcel 9, C-2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District. Property owned by Jude LaPorte. Mr. Logan.
Thank you. So this is an existing building at 5242 Murfreesboro Road, and it was originally built as a medical office building, and you can see the overhead image there. There is parking on one side of the building and in front of the building, including two existing ADA spaces. See those here? The plan that was submitted at the workshop had 31 required spaces, and that has changed to the plan in your packets to 32. It went up one. And I know they took some of the square footages for the church, and I'm not sure. It looks like they reduced square footage that they're going to devote to the church use. I'm not sure about that part, but the staff has visited the site a couple of times, so there's the front of the building. And one item worth mentioning, so there's one-way traffic flow around the building, but you can see in some of these photos, so this would be the neighboring property, and the site plan submitted shows they have a 12-foot-wide travel lane. These were taken a week ago, maybe a week and a half, so certainly that day, they did not have any lane on that side. Now, this morning, and that was also the same day, just a different view. This is the corner, and also, this is the neighboring property, so this is the back corner, looking back toward Murfreesboro. Now, this is today. There have been several vehicles moved, and that's a good thing. However, going forward in the future, I'm not sure...
How to prevent the...
That would be a concern...
How to prevent the obstruction?
...of the city is how to maintain that travel lane, especially in case of, you know, emergency or something like that. So this vehicle is obstructing the lane this morning. This was at about 11, maybe 10:30. So anyway, it's an improvement over a week and a half ago. However, and so this would be the southeast side or the Murfreesboro Smyrna side of the building. Again, it's one-way traffic flow with angled parking. So in the back, this is the back. So your plan shows 10 spaces from the corner back here behind the truck. All the way across, it shows 10 spaces, and you can see this is just overgrown, and I'm not sure. It's probably been several years since anybody's maintained it, but at least five spaces are grown up, obstructed. There's not 10 spaces back there. There's only five. So that's been noted in the report, is that they're short probably six spaces. And I'll go back. So they're missing five of the 10, so you would think, well, that's just five spaces short. Well, you'll see on your plan, so this is the corner, this is the last space, but then they have another space over here, so it's hard to tell. I mean, that's not a good design. You're not going to be to fit two very large vehicles of any kind in both corner spaces. One's going to have to be empty, or they're going to either not fit, or they're going to possibly back into each other. So that's where the six space is coming from. I don't see how both of those are functional. So now we're down, we're at five or six spaces short, give or take, which is fairly significant. So that's the, the staff comments on the parking. And I think that was pretty much, the concern was that travel lane that's always blocked, and then the lack of parking in the back, or the fact that it just doesn't match what's on the plan. There's not 10 spaces back there. And I think that was it. I don't know if engineering had any comments or not. I don't think they did.
Is there a requirement for the travel lane?
There would be a requirement if it was a new site. I think the revision came in, and this is just memory, so I could be mistaken. 2008 was a 20-foot travel lane, but this building was built in the 70s, so, you know, it was built to code when it was built. So unless they're changing the footprint of the building, we don't really get to go into those codes questions.
So technically, they don't have to have the 12-foot travel lane?
They would have to have a 20-foot.
A 20-foot, but that could be used on the other side?
By our current code, at least starting in 2008, there would have been a 20-foot required. Because this building was built way before that, the bare minimum has always been 12, even that long ago.
Would they be able to utilize the, where the 12-foot driving lane where the cars were obstructing, could they make those some parallel spots?
No, there's not sufficient space between the side of the building where the cars were parked, but if you can go back...
Also, if you look at GIS, that's not, their property line runs right against the building, so you'd be making parking on someone else's property.
Yeah, the property line is basically 12 feet away from the side of the building, give or take, you know, GIS being off by a foot or two, so you can't really park there without physically blocking that travel lane.
And that makes it difficult for that one-way traffic flow to work whenever there's, basically, there's no way into that.
From the overhead plat, or from the overhead picture, it looked like there's quite a bit of space at the very front of the property up against Murfreesboro Road. Would that be an option at all to add some spaces at the very front? Or would that be too obstructive?
No, I mean, there's some, there's some options to, you know, adjust the parking lot and kind of how the parking is configured, but that's not what was presented.
And I think the, at least my personal opinion looking at it, is if you get rid of that, that one-way route, since that's not part of the property, you're going to have to re-stripe that whole side because you're going to have extreme difficulty parking that route coming in this way versus going out. The other thing I don't see on here is, as far as a dumpster location, that's another thing that's on here, or not on here.
That would fall very closely under our, what we're changing in our ordinance, would it not? Would they would have to have one?
So there's, as far as I know, in our current ordinance, there's no requirement as far as, you know, dumpster locations, that type of thing. Now, with this being in the overlay district, if you were to look at the new rules, that would be a consideration, but we have to look at the old rules, so there's not really anything in there specifying there has to be a dumpster location, or what kind of screening requirements, that type of thing. So it's kind of, I know we're all excited to be on the new set of rules, but we got to...
Well, no, I'm not thinking necessarily with the new set of rules. I'm thinking that might impact parking as well, the number of spaces.
Yes, sir. Is there somebody from this project that could come to the podium, please? Would you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Jamar, 2516 Tree Top Drive.
Thank you. And your name?
Jamar.
Jamar. Other name?
LaPorte.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Obviously, you've heard the conversation that we're having, so kind of understand where we're going with this.
Yes, I do.
We've got a few issues that we're trying to work around.
As for the parking where the bushes are, this was, the property as of now is vacant.
Right.
So we, ever since we purchased it, it's been vacant, so that's why we're trying to get this plan so that we can start using the property. So we purchased the property as it is, and that place where we had drew on the plans, that's where the proposed place for the parking is going to be, and that's just tree limbs that can be cut off, and there's a nice amount of space there. And as for the parking, the space where the vehicle is right there, those are our neighbors. They give us issues like this. I spoke, me personally, I've spoken to them about four times, and we want to take measures towards getting that space vacant, because as of now, there's, as you can see, right there, that's all our neighbors, and they're on our property.
Yes, sir.
They're on our property, and they're blocking it. And if you can drive, if you were to go out there, I drive a circle around there all the time, but lately, for the past few months, I've been having issues with them. I tried to speak, I had tried to speak to him a few times, but for some reason, he's not listening to me. He will take them out for a few and then put them back, but we will initiate a plan of towing, possibly towing these vehicles, because I have reached out to him more than four times. So we will take precautionary measures for the property at the same time. But as of now, the property is vacant right now as we speak.
Okay. One of the major issues that we have is the parking, correct, and safety, in my personal I really think we need to bring this back to the workshop so that we can talk about it a little bit, and maybe rearrange your parking a little bit and fix the situation a little bit, because I myself am not feeling comfortable the way it is right now, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels. More than likely, you know, we've had a pretty long, lengthy conversation in regards to those items, so...
Well, as from before, if you can go back to the pictures where the back is, where the tree limbs are, yeah. As you can see right there, the trees, like, those are from the other neighbor's property also, so I assume...
Absolutely, and we require a buffer between residential and commercial properties. So when you start thinning that buffer out, it could turn into a situation down the road. So that's why I would really prefer, before we go too extensively into this, that we request a deferral, we come back to workshop. That way, we have some time to specifically address these items, because as it stands right now, we've got some questions, and for the best interest of the project, I think a deferral would be possible.
Okay, just a last note. All that right there is for, it just, over the length of time, has come into our property, and all that can be shaved off.
Absolutely.
And there's an adequate amount of space for vehicles to park there and for a vehicle to pass freely by, because there's enough space in the midst. But as I stated before, that came from their property, and as the property was vacant, so that's why we didn't get to chance, Mr. Senator, propose.
You did tell me that. So here's what we're looking for, I think, just listen to the conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, and rest of the board. You presented a project, and you've had it drawn up, and you paid the engineer to do it. What our issue is that we, we and staff can't see, you've drawn the plan, looks good, meets car park spaces are good, but the plan doesn't match what we're seeing.
Okay.
So if you were, as example, to stripe the side with your neighbor you have an issue with, if you striped it, and then put some signs up, keep out, or be towed away, that's good. But the back of the property, you'll list in 10 spaces, and staff is saying, we only see five. So if you could clear out the area to give you 10 spaces...
Okay.
Then what you presented is what they see and what we see, then we can move forward. Then what you presented is what they see and what we see, then we can move forward.
So I, would you like to request a deferral so that we can address these items and then we'll continue on with this next month? We'll get all this hashed out. More than likely, one of the requests that I'm gonna make is move some of the parking spots from the rear of the building so that we don't lose the buffer to the front of the building where there is space. So there's just some items that we need to handle. Uh, we all like for the projects to go through relatively fast, but in order to get it done right correctly, so it's safe for everybody, sometimes it does take a little bit of time and, you know, I respectfully ask that you ask for a defer, deferral on this item. Is that fine?
Mr. Chairman, just as a
Yes, sir.
a note from staff. Um, so, and I guess it's, uh, just a point. Uh, as, as shown to you, you have a site plan, which would be basically its end state. What you see is kind of existing condition. Whatever needs to be, what needs to be submitted to us is an existing condition on one sheet saying, this is what it looks like now. Then the proposed condition is what it's gonna look like when we're done. That way you don't have to actually physically go out and do all this work before you come back to the planning commission, but we do need to say, this is what it is now. This is what it's gonna look like when we're done. So that can be all your clearing, striping, whatever traffic control measures you take to keep your neighbor from encroaching across the line. If you decide to take up some of your parking in the front and realign that, you don't have to, you know, go out and build it immediately. You just have to say, you know, this is what I got now. When we're done with this, this is what it's gonna look like. And then you have a set amount of time to do it. Otherwise we don't let you use the building.
And I think showing the, the property lines.
Yes.
Especially on that back corner. Looking at GIS, it, it gets within just a few feet of the building.
Eight or seven feet. Your average vehicle's nine.
That is a concern of getting any kind of regular vehicle, whether it's a family van or a truck through that and not crossing over to someone else's property. That's a one-way section.
It flows nicely. I mean, there's still space. If you come out to the property, um, if, even if you take the picture from the previous, that's a big truck right there.
Well, I, I was out there.
Okay.
I went out there probably a week and a half, two weeks ago.
Okay.
But the way that the county has the property lines drawn, that, the, the green line almost touches the corner.
I, I would highly recommend if you haven't already to get a survey on this property so that you know exactly where everything is.
Because the county shows it.
That's very important in a situation to this. By deferring it, it's gonna do two things. It's gonna allow us to get the project correct and it's gonna allow us to protect, use the property owner with everything that's on paper because it'll be done correctly.
And one last, one last, um, thing, he had, he has, um, the plan that you guys have right now is the proposed plan.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that's, that's how it will be, like the, the plans that you guys have right now currently. As I said, it's a vacant property. So that's why, um, we had to bring the proposed plan to you guys first.
Absolutely. And that's why we want to come back to the workshop so that we can iron everything out, so to say.
How, how do we move from sixty-five hundred square feet to sixty-one fifty?
And it has changed a little bit since our, since our workshop as well.
That would be, um, an internal discussion between the applicant and the engineer. I, they didn't, they didn't notify me of anything. I mean, I see that on the plan, but.
And did we?
I, I think it goes back to, excuse me, I think it goes back to Mr. Brinkley's conversation about from the workshop about the sprinkling problem slash issue. And I guess they took his advice. I don't know.
Well, those are all items I believe.
He's not here tonight, so I don't know what he cares about.
There's still a lot of questions.
There's still a few things.
Yeah, that, that part is concerning as well.
I'm, I'm also interested in what the seating capacity is. I know we, we said sixty seats, but we also talked about a square footage would have a capacity that may far exceed sixty seats. And so somewhere between thirty-six fifty and four thousand square feet to an auditorium type setting and, uh, an analysis of that would be appreciated as well.
So we'll be discussing the capacity and seating as well at the workshop. But at this moment, do you have any other questions for us, sir? Okay. Any questions for the applicant or any statements for the applicant from staff of the board? We will see you at workshop, which will be the second Tuesday of next month. We'll get all this ironed out. We'll work together and we'll make a really nice, nice building for y'all. Thank you all very much. Our next item, item number ten, adoption of Laverne land use and transportation plan. Mr. Logan.
Uh, thank you. Uh, we have our consultant here tonight and, um, I think he's gonna answer any questions, talk about the revisions that were made over the last couple of weeks.
Hello, sir. State your name and address for the record.
Michael Wood, three oh two Innovation Drive, Franklin, Tennessee. I've got a list of the changes if you'll like.
Please.
Absolutely.
So this is the change list and they updated the map based on the discussion. So we can, we can run through those.
Thanks, sir.
This is, this encompasses all the that we went over in the last meeting.
Thank you.
So again, these are all the changes. Uh, most of them are mapping related as we, uh, discussed. Uh, we changed the neighborhood mixed use character area along Jefferson Pike to be a little bit larger area. And since that map is utilized by both plans, it constituted some changes, uh, to, to those. Got the, the PK hour clarified. So if there's any other changes or if there's any other discussion, we can, we can walk through those.
Just got one question for, just to clarify. Um, where you've got marked number twenty-three, is that new road or new, uh, new roadway? It's like we've got two different distinctions for roadway.
We're at.
Right off the roundabout? It's just, it's, I'm just wanting to make sure we've got, we've got new roadway, new roadway.
That's just a, yeah, that's
Okay.
We can take that off.
Okay. Just duplication. Okay.
That was me making the maps when our GIS tech was out of the office. So we'll get that clarified.
Just a question on the, the orange, um, obviously you run out of space there. So it's South Walden Neighborhood CO. What are you defining that as?
Appears to be an asterisk there.
Again, that's a, like, we can, it's just cut off.
Cut off, okay. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted, the definition's on there.
It's, uh, the South Walden Neighborhood Character Area. So.
What was that last part, sir?
Character area.
Thank you.
So I see on here, on number twenty-three, is that proposed, a proposed road?
Yeah, it's new roadway.
Now, is that coming off of near Shribman onto Stones River?
Mm-hmm.
Is this on the property that the city just purchased?
Yeah, that's, that's listed. Adam, have you looked at number nine at all? I know that's, um, that was an area we discussed with Brookside where originally they were wanting to go across that waterway but couldn't. And it's got that as proposed road as well. I think that was one that we couldn't go over because it was gonna cause, uh, flooding issues.
Uh, no, we, it was done in lieu of, originally the developer had intended to, uh, connect them. But unfortunately their plan hinged on using inline detention of that stream, which TDEC no longer allows. So in lieu of doing inline detention, building that bridge over which part of their detention structure would be, they elected instead with the blessing of the planning commission to build detention ponds and improve Carruthers Road. So it was just an in lieu of thing. It was not necessarily a cost thing, but what would work better for their situation.
Okay. That's something that if, if in the future the city wants to do, they can put a road through there.
Yeah, it would be entirely possible.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Can you explain to me where you came up with the, the crossroad from near Shribman to Stones River on twenty-three?
That was, uh, just looking, and again, as we talked about last month, these are not exact, exact alignments, nowhere near it. It's really just saying that there needs to be an increased connectivity point through some of those parcels.
So, go ahead.
Well, my question is the city just purchased that property. So for the, for the proposed road that may or may not go there, I'm just trying to, the justification of that road, it, it's clearly not a, it's not gonna, um, it's not a cross street there. So you're making an L. So you're coming off of a main vein, jumping over. You're kind of, it's like a detour almost. And I'm just wondering why that would be, why would that be proposed?
It, it would be to increase connectivity and then also to, uh, provide for any of the development that happens in any of those parcels, that they would have multiple points of connection, uh, through a new roadway, not necessarily through the existing roadway network.
This is a note, this was all done well before the, there was either evident, even an inkling of, you know, purchasing the property. So really it was put there under the understanding that it was zoned residential and eventually it would be residential. So it was included. So if a developer was to build it at R two, which was what it was zoned, they would have built this road just to provide that connectivity between Stones River and near Shribman. Of course, with, you know, things changing, is it something cities would still want to pursue? Maybe, maybe not. There, depending on what goes out there, interior roads may or may not be necessary, but we're not really at that point. As far as benefit wise, it just gives us the opportunity if we were to be, you know, repaving near Shribman utility work such as the work that we're planning on, uh, not Stones River, actually, yeah, Stones River. When we're planning major utility work, that's coming on the, probably in the next year, having a road like that would give you the option to reroute around it. So really what, and I can only speak for what Teresa, how Teresa would have looked at it. It's all about, you know, maintaining extra points of connection just for your emergency vehicles, road closures, detours. And that was the reason it was included in the plan.
This isn't a, a concrete plan. This is, you know, suggestions and a guide for the future. It's not, hey, this is, because I, I can see some differences with, um, some discussions with Sam Ridley and Blair Road. So.
Yep. And I mean, really, you know, of course you have to look at this. This is, you know, forty thousand foot above, looking down, planning. So and I, you know.
The question for, the reason why I brought it up when this is, does this roll over to the mayor and alderman or is it the planning commission?
This is, this is it.
This is basically just your policy framework. So it gives you more options. It kind of lays them out in a little bit more detail, but nothing, definitely nothing in, set in stone.
So when a project comes along and it's presented to us and we look at our transit plan.
Yep.
It allows us to start connecting the roads and connecting utilities and.
But it, this doesn't give us the, any leniency on rezoning any properties?
The transit plan itself. Not the transportation plan.
Transportation plan, wouldn't the, the land use plan.
The other plan, the land use plan.
It's basically, it's again, it's your policy guidance. It's, um, it, it's what you theoretically should follow and, and go through, but it, it, you're again, uh, the.
That, that's kind of where I'm struggling and, and maybe it's just because I don't understand it. As we're putting the land use plan together, it is a guide for future development. My problem with having a guide like this, it's gonna be submitted as is. So a year down the road or two years down the road, we have someone that owns fifty acres of, of land. Are we gonna be in a position where we're gonna force them to rezone their property or is that something that the, they have the choice?
No, it's, it's still the same rezoning process. I mean, at some point if this board would like to undertake some, you know, zoning changes as part of a zoning ordinance update, that, that would be an option, you know, using, you know, the guidelines laid out here. But as far as, you know, cherry picking, you know, one lot and rezoning, I, I doubt very seriously the board of mayor and alderman would choose to, you know, pursue that since they're actually the board that votes on, you know, rezoning and even when rezoning, so, and I'm, I'm gonna use the word forcibly or, you know, against somebody's wishes, they still have an appeals process and everything that goes on there. So.
But this does give the footwork for that if need be.
Um, well, it doesn't, it gives a guide to kind of what this board, this planning commission would like to see the city move toward. It doesn't, you know, give an absolute, you need to go rezone X, Y, Z properties. So as far as, you know, actually starting anything, that's, that's all basically the board of mayor and alderman and this board, you know, either giving recommendations or moving forward on them. Um, I guess the best way to look at it is it kind of provides a policy framework so that when someone comes in with something to rezone, you can look at the plan and say, well, this rezoning is consistent with what we're planning. And if the city was to go into comprehensive zoning, it would also give a plan for the city, city to say, okay, we want everything near I twenty-four to be the innovation district. And this is, you know, while we're doing it. People that are still using it.
Comprehensive zoning, that's defined as what?
Well, that would actually be part of a zoning ordinance update, which is, you know, kind of what we're scheduling. And that's, um, you know, basically it's all gonna go before board of mayor and alderman. It's all voted on. There's the appeal process. Um, basically everyone has opportunity to either A, preserve their rights or, you know, B, argue one way or the other, or take the issue to court, which usually when, um, some cities pursue it pretty aggressively, they, they win some, they lose some. Most cities, the changes tend to be net positives, especially with, I think most of what our plan proposes is to be generally net positive overall because we're gonna, as y'all have read in the plan, we're gonna allow mixed use, which is, um, you know, planning cyclical. So stuff goes in style and goes out of style. Mixed use was big in the fifty, sixty, seventies. That's when you had kind of a live work concept. That's, that's really what's kind of fresh at the moment. And not to say that it will go stale anytime soon, but that's, that's just the nature of planning world. So I think most people will be generally supportive of the, the plan as we've thrown out. And even if they're not, they're gonna get to take that to their elected officials and tell them that they, they don't support it if it was part of a comprehensive zoning update. But this is just a framework to say, you know, if everything went right, we would like the city to have more retail, more mixed use, more office space instead of industrial. You know, that's, that's really what it's, what it's saying. It's, it's a wish list with some framework to how you get there.
So the mixed use, I see it's heavy in the old center of town. Is that what this board, is that what the board wants?
The Murfreesboro corridor here, sir?
Well, it's, if you look at it, it's the, the backside of the, the old plot here. That's all the mixed use to it.
Well, so, so there is, so just to clarify, I mean, there is a, a neighborhood mixed use character area, but then a lot of the corridors also have, as Adam was saying, I mean, it is kind of the trend that is going, uh, to allow a little bit, not necessarily just commercial or just residential, but to have areas where they, they, that can be, uh, both of those uses can be allowed. Uh, so tried to, to build those in, into several different character areas. Um.
And the Old Nashville Highway corridor, what would that, or core, what would that, what's the, the meaning of that?
What, so the, so each, uh, character area has a policy associated with it. So the, uh, the Old Nashville, um, is on page thirty-seven. So it's, um, it's, it is a mixed use district. So it would allow residential, public and civic, commercial and office uses. Um, but the buildings would be a little bit more residential in scale. Uh, and all of these things are kind of specified in, in the actual policy matrix. Parking is a little bit more subordinate. It's not, you know, you, you don't pull up and there's a sea of parking, like when you're going into Walmart, it, parking would kind of be more relegated to, uh, to the rear of the building. like when you're going into Walmart, parking would kind of be more relegated to, uh, to the rear of the building. So all of these things are kind of built in to, to each, each character area.
I guess the importance for me is whether we approve this or we don't approve it, this is, this will be like the Bible from current, you know, it will, it's, it's our future plan. So if we, uh, if we don't make the right decision, it would, it would follow many generations.
Well, but the thing, it's not you adopt it and you can't ever update it or change it, or say we've, you know, circumstances have changed, the property owner has a different idea, they make the case to this board. You, you're, your hands aren't tied on this, I mean, it's, it's not like you're, you know, you're saying this is what we're committing ourselves to no matter what. If circumstances change, if the economy changes, if a, a big development comes in and you say, we need to rethink our approach to this, a, all of those things are on the table, I mean, there's no, uh, you know, don't be, uh, under the impression that, that this is not a living document. They're, they're actually meant to be, and it actually is built into the, uh, to the implementation stages, that it, it, it needs to be looked at, you know, periodically, and, and the rate of growth in Middle Tennessee, we've kind of told people. Used to say, you know, you can adopt a plan, when Bo and I first started doing this, we'd say, you adopt a plan and it's good for, you know, ten, twenty years. The growth rate around Middle Tennessee, you can't do that, I mean, you really have to look at it within three to five years, uh, for, for big updates.
For the land use and transportation, it's, it's a living, breathing document, and it's a guide, it's not a hard and fast, this is what you have to do.
You're not committed to approving everything, even if it falls into this category, but you're also not.
Yes, but we know when it comes in front of the mayor and alderman later down the road, it's, uh, it was adopted by the Planning Commission, that's the best selling point. So for, for the mayor and alderman, when you hear that it's adopted by the Planning Commission and you have a hundred residents out there.
Right.
You, you better, you better make the right decision, because you have a hundred residents and we have thirty thousand people that want it, but the hundred residents.
Sure.
They own the property.
Right.
And, uh.
Well, just to make an example, we'll just, we'll just bring up the Old Nashville corridor highway, you brought that up.
Yeah.
Sir, when you look at what's dictated here on mixed use, from my experience, that is ideal for the situation we're in on Old Nashville Highway.
Right.
Okay, so this would be an easy sell to the citizens, when you, I mean, when you look at this, when you look at this, I mean, everything's going to be, our guide would be to be compatible to a residential type application.
Oh, it is, and, and that's.
Yeah, and then you're looking at the parking.
But if.
Trying to put the parking on the, the rear and the side, I'm just, I'm just, I'm making this as an example.
Yeah, and that, and, and I'm in agreeance with something like that, but if you jump over to the, uh, the Waldron Road area, you know, the, some of the, the usage out there, I mean, these people have, uh, they've made some really hefty investments in that area, and there's a lot of land out there. So the decisions we make are real important, you know, when, when you have the, um, whether the home's twenty thousand or, or, you know, five hundred thousand, the value of the tenants would remain the same if quality of life. They, they moved out there for a reason, and, uh, with this plan, you know, I mean, with, with this plan here, what would stop condos from going in, in that area?
Your zoning.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, the zoning, the zoning, but with this plan.
This doesn't change the zoning.
This doesn't change that at all.
It gives us the ability, it gives us the ability, just like our engineers said.
Well, the boards always have the ability, this, this doesn't change that ability in any way.
But it's one more, it's one more, uh, item to go back on.
And, and looking at the negative sides of Mr. Church, one positive that I see from this is, let's take that same South Waldron neighborhood. We have absolutely no power as of right this second to put any kind of commercial or anything out there. Gas station, nothing, because it would be considered spot zoning. This gives us a guideline to work with to do that, because growth is coming, and there's no way to prevent that. As far as density and investment and value, that's what we're here to protect the citizens for, is to make sure that we don't overcrowd the city, do too much, compromise the infrastructure. So that, that's, that responsibility, responsibility falls on our shoulders.
And with rezoning, we've had many instances over the last two years that I, I can remember, and even before that, going to the meetings for probably six years before that, where Planning Commission may approve something to be rezoned.
Yes.
But the Board of Mayor and Alderman will, will completely disagree with that.
Absolutely.
Shoot it down, so there's no, this locks in anything. The Board of Mayor and Alderman still has its ability to approve or deny rezoning, just the same as this board has a rec, has the approval or denial of a recommendation to approve.
This actually, in, in my opinion, opens the door for the city in a lot of areas that we didn't have the opportunity to.
And I am in agreeance with that.
Do proper growth.
I, I agree with the, the ultimate goal of the plan, where I, where I have a problem with. Currently, we have developers lobbying to do a lot of activities on the, the Waldron Road area, and adopting this plan is, um, without, you know, talking to the residents out there, it's going to really open up a corridor for, for some things, I think that would be in best need for the city. But that's, I appreciate you answering my questions.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The, uh, with the, with regard to this being a living document, have you provided to staff editable formats of these documents to where we have the ability to modify and update these plans?
I, I have sent them the drafts, but when we get the final version, if it is adopted, uh, by the Planning Commission, the hat will give all the GIS data, all the, the Word documents, um, all the information will definitely be handed over to staff.
CAD file maps.
Not, not, I don't think anything was done in CAD, I think it was all done in GIS, but anything that we've got, we'll provide, I mean, this, this is Laverne's document.
So we can update this?
Yes.
In-house.
So is this the final? That's what I just heard. It, it, it can be if you so choose to vote on it tonight. There were some minor modifications that needed to be made, you could elect to vote on it with those modifications to be made, since they're of a minor nature. That, that's at the board's discretion.
Are these the modifications that we were handed?
Whenever.
Or are there others?
Those, those modifications have already been made to the plan that you've seen.
Okay.
So the two that have been specifically mentioned thus far, I believe, had to do with an asterisk on one, which was where it got cut off by GIS program.
Yeah.
And the other one was a duplication error, which was also.
I'm going to blame on Micah.
Yeah.
With good reason.
I just have another question, so back to South Waldron twenty-eight. You list in the document itself, specifically, um, government and public use C1, where I think we need to be looking at not only C1 but C2 as well. C1 is very limited and basically goes to the, the government only, and we're looking at more commercially out there.
C1 is very restrictive for the city.
So my comment would be to, although it says in, in the revision, it does say residential, retail and commercial, in your, in the original document or your draft, you're listing.
I, I have included that, the updated version, so what this revision would include would be basically what your comment was, adding a broader commercial definition.
So we will be taking the C1 out per se, or leaving C1 in, but also including C2, because that's obviously what we're looking for, which is obviously more the retail side.
Yeah, so.
So at the moment it's a bit contradictory, but if we can define that, I think we're, we're moving forward.
Yeah, you, you got in front of me right before you went into that, I was going to this and had it sitting, so, good catch, Graham.
Okay.
With those things noted then, would it be the will of this board to see not a draft document, but a final document at workshop and meeting, uh, and anticipate adoption at that time? Because that's kind of the direction that I'm leaning.
I'm, I'm more forward of saying, we, we identified the specific change we're looking for to, to move forward with the approving it, with those changes as noted.
And I, I, I will second that, that's a motion.
And staff is well aware of these.
Yeah, I don't think that was a motion, that was a comment.
No, that's not, it's a comment, and staff is aware of all changes that need to be made. Uh, and just, just, just for record sake.
Yes, sir, please.
There will be, uh, two revisions to the map to be made, the removal of an asterisk on the South Waldron District and the deletion of a duplication on item twenty-three, uh, to address Mr. Coats' comment. I believe the commercial has already been added in to the, uh, South Waldron Road District as, as requested previously, as noted in the, uh, change log present before this board, so, um, I'm not going to, you know, coach your motion, because that's not really my job, but if you were to make a motion, it should include the, uh, I would just state minor map revisions, I think that would be sufficient. And of course Bruce or Daniel can chime in on that at any given time, but I, I think that would cover us pretty well.
Yeah, I, I have a comment on that, when residents bring us plots and other things and plans, if it's not in there, we ask them to come back. So this is something.
We, we do typically allow minor revisions of a drafting nature, if there's a drafting error where a, a line is misdrawn or too thick, we, we typically approve those with the understanding that they're going to be fixed at the time of actual construction.
And, and I'll, I'll just add, we could have printed the copies, but we were going to print the final copies as well, so in lieu of, since the, the changes were relatively minor and were mostly to the maps, we didn't print the full versions in lieu of bringing you back the full approved documents. So that was, that was kind of my judgment call on that, so.
Personally, I, I would, I would really like to be voting on a final, I understand they're minor, they are minor items and the motion can go any way it wants to, um, but, um, just in case.
Sure.
You know, we look through it a year down the road and it doesn't look familiar, you know, we actually voted on a final, is, is my personal opinion. But with that, I'm going to open for, to a motion. Vote to accept as submitted, not accept as submitted, or defer, I think are three options on the table, is that correct, sir?
Well, I, I want to go back to, I think we discussed it, we, we understand we've cut more trees down, doing more sheets of paper, it's been clearly eliminated, the changes we've talked about this evening, you know, very specifically, so with that, I'll make a motion to accept, with the additional items as noted here in this document.
We have a motion to accept as submitted with the additional items stated by staff, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Or discussion.
Would you like, do you have a comment, Mr. Holliday?
Yeah, I really think that, you know, we, there are times when we'll accept something, you know, that, that has a, a note, you know, hey, you know, there's a little typo right here, but, but, but we're going to accept this anyway. I would say that all of those decis, decisions are less, less than decisions than this decision. A, a twenty-year, uh, comprehensive land use plan, a twenty-year comprehensive transportation plan, I just don't feel like that it's the place for, oh, and one more revision, oh, two more revisions, oh, you know, and I would be much more comfortable, uh, if we had this a hundred percent correct. How long have we worked on this, how much have we spent on this, um, isn't this a turnkey, are we charged every time you print it again? You know, we've spent a lot of money to get it exactly right, and we've got one time to cast a vote for that which is absolutely correct. I know time is of the essence, but accuracy is important as well.
With that being said, any other discussions or comments?
I agree with, uh, Mr. Holliday. You guys have, have really, you've done a really good job putting this together, there's no question in, as I educate myself and through the board, on what everything means, the decision we make is real important. This is, it's not going to be a twenty-year plan, we've all, we all know in five years, this may be changed because of growth. But when you have the, when this could be the beginning of, uh, let's just say what it is, you know, we could make some changes in zoning in the future, we could do some things, uh, that, uh, we, we just need to be right, we just need, the documentation needs to be right, that way when the citizens come to us as a board and they say, hey, why did you do that, we can say, because we, we spent many hours, many months, and this has been on the table for a couple of years. Right, Adam?
A year and a half.
Yeah, a year and a half, I mean, so thirty more days, it's, it's not, uh, it's not the end of the world to me, and I would really like the board to consider that.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, I'm going to take a roll call vote, we have a motion on the table to accept as submitted with, um, staff's comments, we have a second, Mr. Holliday?
Yes. Aye. Aye. No.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well for myself, motion passes, we will be sending, or we gave it a favorable recommendation, is that correct?
No.
You voted to accept it.
Thank you, thank you very much, got a little confused there.
I, I would request when the final gets copied and printed and booked, to make sure everyone gets a set, so we all have a set.
Yes, sir, as soon as, um, that'll be, Micah does for next week.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Hard work, we're looking forward to the final.
Now, this, this was a, a great project, I, I appreciate being able to work with you.
Thank you, sir. And our final item is bonds and letters of credit.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, the only update has been Mr. Roy Waldron extended his letter of credit for Ober Heights for one more year, and of course some additional houses have been completed in that time.
Thank you, everyone, for your time, meeting is adjourned.